Tuesday, October 4th, 2016. Have the council member by, I'm sorry, invocation by council member Scott Irwin and pledge of allegiance by council member Doug Don Williams, please stand.
Please bow your hands. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for each person here today, Lord. Lord, we just ask you to bless them. Bless the residents of our city, Lord. Just give them peace and let them thrive in our community, Lord. Lord, we pray for our nation. We pray for wisdom on a national level, state, and in this city council meeting today. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Please face the flag and repeat the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm gonna have to settle down. I'm not used to this many people. Welcome. All right. Huh? Thank you. All right, roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Larkin.
Here.
Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
Approve the minutes as September 20th, 2016, regular meeting in dispense with the reading. So, ma'am. Second. Council, please cast your vote. We've got an amendment.
No, sir. It's, we don't have to do that one.
You do it, you do it at that time.
We do it when we-
Oh, when it comes up?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then as far as Mr. Rocket, he will be joining us in a couple of weeks. He was deferred. And next is the Bojor Commission for Women.
We need to approve the agenda.
Oh.
We need to motion a second.
I told you I was nervous. I'm out of-
You can't be nervous. I'm nervous.
Can we start over?
I'll move that way. Approve the agenda.
Second. Council, please cast your vote. I'm just excited. I mean, I like this.
He's not used to an audience.
I'll have to come back. I'm used to speaking to myself, really, so. All right, now, are we good?
Yes, sir.
Ceremonium matters. Bojor Commission for Women. Wonder who that is. Jeff, do you know?
She looks familiar.
Good afternoon, Mayor Walker, President Montgomery, Vice President Darby, city council members. I am Jasari Darby. I am here with the Commission for Women of Bojor City, and we are here to present to you and the general public our mentees for the 2016-2017 mentee school year. Our mentoring program, our mentees for the 2016-2017 school year are, from Airline High School, we have Tatiana Collins, please stand. Senior Snow Nguyen. Benton High School, Senior Rebecca Grantham. Benton High School, also Senior Emily Roden. Bojor High School, Senior Michaela Miller. Senior Tomaya Turner from Bojor High School. From Horton High School, Mackenzie Dick. Senior Courtney Jackson. Parkway High School, Senior Hannah Rainbow. Marissa Silvertooth. Plain Dillon High School, Gracie Miller. Jamelio Williams. And from Providence Classical Academy, Leila Beavers and Taylor Harville. I would also like to recognize our commissioners and mentors for the 2016-2017 school year. Commissioners, would you please stand with me? We would just like to take this time to thank you, Mayor Walker, and the city council for your continued support throughout this school year and through the years in past. We thank you so much and have a great evening.
Thank you and congratulations. Would you like to? I still think you ought to say something.
I told you, they divorced me.
Congratulations and welcome. Thank y'all. Ms. Pam Glorioso, update on Bojor downtown re-envisioning.
Good afternoon, council. Well, as Councilwoman Montgomery has such an excitement, we have that same excitement going in downtown Bojor. The re-envisioning project is alive and well and creating a synergy and an excitement for Bojor City. Every day, the phone is ringing from people inquiring to, how can I bring my small business there? What is available and what will the future look like for downtown? You know, as you all know, we kicked this project off with construction April of this year. Our contractor Boggs and Pull has done an exceptional job and they are on schedule. The weather that was put us behind, he has now caught up. As you, if you've had an opportunity to be down there, we have some asphalt on the ground, starting at traffic to Arcadia Street. The next phase of asphalt on the ground, we'll pick it from Arcadia and take it to Mansfield Street and doing those segments. We met this morning with the contractor. There are some always, as I've called, oh-ohs that we've encountered because there's so many unknowns in the infrastructure that lies under the asphalt there. But the water in the sewer are being taken care of, block, blah, block. The last leg of the block will be the block from McCormick to Hamilton Road. That will be the next phase of closure that we'll see. But what I wanted to do today is bring you up to date. I've given you the packet with the financials, and those are, those are a matter of black and white, and I won't bore you with those. But I do have another drone video that we had last time to show you that will give you an overall look. If you hadn't had a chance, we'll give you the bird's eye view of what's going on. Jennifer? This starts at Traffic Street and carries you through with the new asphalt that's been in, that's been put in place. Of course, the dirt will be the landscaped area and the sidewalks that will come back in, but we wanted to open it up for vehicular traffic for the businesses that have been patient along with us because it's been, it's been a tough road for some of these. But it's nice and clean and fresh, and you can picture, as I've told people, we've just put the layers of the cake together. We've not put the icing on this yet. Some lot, lot yet to come. We're taking you down to the corner of Arcadia, which will be the corner on the north side of the Hoot and Holler archery place, is where the asphalt pavement stops now. And now they're putting in the rock, the soil cement that will go into that point, and we'll be able to lay asphalt from that point. Their utility contractor is working ahead of them to keep up with the pace. The way he's got it staged, we're working utility, infrastructure, utility, infrastructure, and working phase in and in. The plan of action that he came, that Mike Boggs came up with six months ago is working. All in all, we hope to open the schedule in April, May of next year. The next phase of it, we'll actually start beginning to work on Monroe Street by Little Italiana. We'll be able to close that street now that we have taken down the old building at 310 Monroe, and that now becomes parking. There will accommodate parking for Little Italiana and lead over into Mansfield Street for parking for Mancheck Cajun Solutions, and also some public parking will be provided there as well. So we're able to close Monroe now and actually start the Plaza area. And as you can see, now we're out in the dirty area where all the constructions. But these are the big drainage retention areas that you're seeing, those big swimming pool type elements that are going in there. The calls we're getting that are generated interest are small type cottage industries, which I think is what we're wanting in that downtown, to complement the millennials and the young people and the citizens of Bojor that will be going in there. Small restaurants, or we'll be bringing new life into old buildings like the old Barksdale Drugstore. Will become a new sports bar and grill. Also CPA, CPA will be located there. We've talked to a donut coffee shop that will be coming into the area, and also a small type grocery that will be there to complement the living residential people that will be there. So we're excited about what we're talking to and the idea that they have opportunity now to pre-plan. And so I think while they're pre-planning and we're building, the two will be in concert together, working together to roll this out in 2017 this time. Next year, it should be an exciting new project that we will see that won't end because it will be a complementing of each other. It will be continuing to grow of apartments will be coming in there and single family and also new retail businesses. But overall, council, thanks for looking, looking good and we're on schedule. Thank you.
Pam?
Yes, sir.
Are we getting any feedback as to some of the existing businesses maybe doing some upgrades to their exterior, to the facade or anything?
There are a few, there are a few that are rental properties there, and they are working with the current tenant or a future existing tenant to do upgrades there. You've had a few new businesses that have opened in between. Ms. Christie Tiff has opened up Downtown Tattoo, which is a new business that has come into there, and looks for expansion of a similar type business that will come into that, into that area as well. We hope so. The opportunity is there for them, and I think a lot of them see the opportunity. We had to get past the dirt and the dust.
Right.
And I think those things will come.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Let me ask, let me ask one thing. On the, on the property that's being exchanged, is that with the city exchange or?
Those were the property exchanges we did two months, well, actually last month, with Cajun Solutions and Little Italiana. Those exchanges have already taken place.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Those were right away areas that we needed off of Monroe Street and O'Gilvie for the, for the new road designs to take place.
Okay.
And we exchanged properties with those people. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Pam. Next, Mr. Chuck Meehan with the Volunteers of America.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery, and thank you, Mayor Walker and council. It's my privilege to have the opportunity to take a few minutes today to share with you some information about Volunteers of America and what we do for veterans, those who've served us who now need some assistance. But before I do that, I want to take this opportunity to thank the mayor, thank the council, and thank the city of Bojor City for nearly 20 years of support for our lighthouse program at the Scott Street Housing Development. We've partnered to address the needs of children who live in that development and from the surrounding area to, to succeed educationally and to, to break the cycle of poverty and dependency. And, you know, I think the best way to do it is to share a story. Actually, I had the opportunity to mention to Ms. Darby, who worked there at one time. There's a young girl, Raquel, who two years ago graduated from Airline High School, and as a kindergartner, she entered the lighthouse, our lighthouse program at the Scott Street Development. She's a June, sophomore at ULM. Her student job is working for the president over there. She happened to get a four-point GPA last semester. And I thank you on the Raquels who have been through that program over the years for your investment in that special work. But on to today, I want to take a few minutes to, to really concentrate on our services for veterans. And Volunteers of America was new to this business, frankly, or is new to this business. In about the year 2008, staff from the Overton Brooks Medical Center approached us, asked us to apply for federal funds through the Veterans Administration to open what's called a Transitional Living Program for homeless veterans. And if you all remember back to 2008 and '09, it wasn't quite the time when you wanted to go out on a limb, but we were able, thanks to the generosity of this community, to raise a little over a million dollars to acquire the property renovated and opened a 56-bed facility for homeless veterans. Or as we prefer to say, vets who just didn't have a place to lay their heads. And in, in 2010, we opened that program. In just over six years, frankly, we've developed a much-needed and impressive array of services for veterans and families. Our mission is essentially to help vets move from homelessness to independence or to prevent homelessness in the first place. And I'd like to take the opportunity to put a face to what, what we do. And I've invited Hank Ward, a vet who graduated from our Transitional Program, to, to share his story.
Hank?
Afternoon, gentlemen. In 2009 is when I was first pretty much introduced to-
Let me, I'm sorry to interrupt. Just state your full name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Henry Lloyd Ward, 2622 Palmetto Drive, Bojor City, Louisiana.
Thank you.
Let me back up a little bit. In '99, I joined the military. I deployed to Bosnia in '01. While in the country of Bosnia, 9/11 happened. And so when I came home, I started training up to go to Iraq. I went to Iraq for OIF II. I was there '04 and '05 during some of the most bloodiest months any, any military was there. Saw a lot of things that still stick with me. I'll just say that. I came home, I started self-medicating and not legal medication. I wound up distancing myself from my family, my friends. I had nowhere to live and nothing going for me. In '09, I attempted suicide. I, a few weeks later, I, after much encouragement from my mother, brought myself down here to the VA hospital. Went through a 28-day detox and in treatment, inpatient treatment program at the VA hospital, and was healthy, was getting, getting healthy all the way around. But I needed a place that I could continue to grow along that positive track. And I was introduced to the Veterans Transitional Living Center on Jordan Street. I was able to have a place where I could lay my head at night, where I can wash clothes, and attend Northwest Louisiana Technical College. While attending Northwest Louisiana Technical College, I graduated with a 4.0 and received an electrician's diploma program. The partnership with the VA and the VOA introduced me to a lot of different contacts that were beneficial to me in the long run. I was able to apply for a job at the VA hospital, and I got that job. I've been an electrician at the VA hospital for the last four and a half years. This past February, I bought my first house ever in Bojor, in Brownlee Estates, right off of Brownlee Road. The VA got me healthy, but the Veterans Transitional Living Center saved my life with the services that they provided, the counseling and the rules and just staying on me a little bit about it. You know, if freewheeling and you might not stay on track, but the Veterans Transitional Living Center with their support and assistance was able to keep me on track, keep my goals, and keep me focused on my goals to where I'm able to buy my own house, have a sustainable job that, that I love, and be here in front of you guys today and be able to tell you a success story. Thank you.
Thank you, Hank. Hank gives us a lot of credit, but frankly, what we did was provided him an opportunity, and he took advantage of it, and we're extremely proud of him. What I want to do is just take a minute and share some information about our array of services. The program that Hank entered was the very first services for veterans that Volunteers of America started. What we are committed to is, we don't like to just tell numbers. Frankly, we measure outcomes in everything that we do because it's all of us, all of us in this, maybe not these kids, yet, but we pay taxes and we invest in the services that Volunteers of America provides. There's a gap between what government gives us for all of what we do and what we have to raise locally. But for all the money that we invest in these services, spend on these services, we believe that all of us deserve a return on investment. Last year, in the program that Hank was a participant in, we had 116 veterans that we served. 78 completed the program. 74% went to permanent housing, and 84% had income from some source after graduating. Soon after we started the Transitional Program, Residential Program for Homeless Vets, we realized that we needed some resources to help prevent homelessness. And so we received monies, applied for a grant, received monies from the VA to provide support services to veteran families. Last year, 556 veterans and families received assistance like rental assistance or utility deposits. It's designed to keep them in their homes or in a home and prevent homelessness. A third program, the third program that we opened two years ago, it's called a Safe Haven. It's for chronically homeless veterans. We have some vets who have come straight from under the bridges into our facility. And last year, we served 86 veterans and 71 moved successfully to permanent housing. A new initiative that we started 18 months ago is we are going into the rural areas, providing health services. We have a telemedicine van that can hook a veteran out in Timbuktu with the, with doctors at Overton Brooks. And we also provide some traditional transportation services. And last year, 331 vets were benefits of that, benefited from that program. We also recognize that what we were seeing with veterans in our residential programs is that because of some history, some bad choices, many of them had, they had situations where they couldn't rent, they couldn't, their credit was bad, and many had, had problems with the law. So we were able through, through the efforts of a number of people, including Sheriff Whittington, who was in the initial meetings, as we planned the Veterans Court Program, which is now housed in Caddo District Court with Judge Craig Markot. But we're just a year into that program, and we've had, we had 16 veterans participate. We've had six graduate in that year's time where the criminal record that they had was expunged, and they're able to, to get the kind of things that they need. The other thing that I, I just want to, one last thing I'd like to mention to you is that there are 20 former service members each day in the United States who commit suicide. And that, 18% of all suicides in our country are veterans. And we realize that we, Volunteers of America, wants to be a part of the effort to address that problem. On the 18th and 19th of October, we've got two veterans coming in. Our national office has, has set up a program. It's called Safe Talk. It's suicide alertness. It was started to really target veterans, and we're engaging those who work with veterans, certainly. But it's open to, to all kinds of agencies and individuals and the clergy who want to, who want to learn the signs that might be indicative of somebody considering suicide. So I want to make the city of Bojor City aware of that. Father Pike Thomas at St. Jude's is hosting it on the 19th, and the 18th will be over in, at First United Methodist Church in, in Shreveport. Thank you. Thank you again for your support. Thank you for giving us the opportunity today to share with you what we collectively as a community, when I say we, it's all of us, are doing to serve those who served us. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you very much. Next, Ms. Michelle Kavanaugh from the Bojor Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. Thank you, President Montgomery, and all city council members. I just want to take this time to officially thank you all for your participation with the Governor's Regional Legislative Forum and the Governor's visit. And without your participation, we couldn't have made it happen, so thank you. Also want to make a special note to your staff at the Civic Center. Shelley Briggs and Fred are outstanding to work with. We appreciate that, and thank you so much. Also, while I'm here, I also wanted to kind of touch base with you about our Bojor Chamber trip to DC. We went in September. When we go, we take a priorities list. I want to share that with you. But we go with partners from the area. We went with Barksdale Forward and Alcoa, Greater Bojor Economic Development Partners, and our Bojor Schools Center representative with us. So while we were there, we were able to meet with all of our state delegations. Meetings were about, I can share that with you.
Thank you.
But while we were there, we were able to thank them for mainly, one of the priorities we talked about was the I-20 gate at the Barksdale Air Force Base. And that information had come out. We knew that, that we were getting some funding for that. So we were able to personally thank those congressmen and senators there. So we were able to personally thank those, um, uh, congressmen and senators there. We also talked about the, um, communications facility need and the new weapon storage facility needs there. Um, while we were there, the flooding was of course a priority and we had a lot of partners from the state of Louisiana there. And, um, they were all discussing those, the flooding and the need for South Louisiana as well as our region. Also, the final thing I wanted to do was invite you, the chamber is hosting our US Congressional Candidates for Meet and Greet and we'd certainly like you to join us for that and, and, uh, and hear their, it's a one-on-one, so you can hear their, their ideas for Congress. Any questions?
Questions?
What date is that?
What's that?
That meet and greet?
Uh, we have, we've been hosting them throughout and so all the candidates, we've had just, uh, casual one-on-one. Uh, three o'clock next, our next one is, um, Trey Bachem, Dr. Trey Bachem, next Tuesday morning at nine o'clock. And then I know we have Marshall Jones on the calendar. I can certainly get that information to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unfinished business?
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate 50,000 to come from the Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund to supplement 100,000 already appropriated for the purpose of rehabilitation as damaged storm drain at Diamond Jack Casino. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds in the amount of 5 million to provide for the replacement of the big airline lift station?
Need a motion to amend that?
I, I'll make a motion to amend this, uh, to change your funding source from the 2014 Utility Bond Fund to the 2016 LDEQ loan.
A second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Make the motion to introduce ordinance as amended?
Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. All right, I did that one right, didn't I?
Adopt an ordinance appropriating 75,000 from the EMS Capital and Contingency Fund to purchase a minimum of 15 Panasonic Toughpad FZG1 electronic tablets and accessories for the Bossier City Fire Department. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate 100,000 to come from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Improvement Fund to be used to contract with Rayleigh and Associate Engineers to provide design of the continuation of Innovation Drive with associated water and sewer mains to accommodate proposed commercial development. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience?
Is that a question? Is this in the city limits?
It will be. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating 500,000 to come from the 2014 Sewer Bond Fund and authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documents necessary to acquire property necessary for the construction of the Green Acres Forest Man Project and the Six Fountain Sewer Pump Station Project. Final reading?
Questions from the council?
So move. Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. New business?
Introduce an ordinance amending Section 114-5 Emergency Medical Funding Services Charge on Utility Bills. First reading?
So move.
Second.
Questions from the council? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance approving the acquisition of the property described as 409 Watson Street and 901 Ogilvy Street, authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documents necessary to acquire property necessary for property acquisition in the old downtown area of Bossier City for the Bossier Reenvisioning Project. First reading?
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to purchase and install new mag registers to be mounted remotely in a weatherproof enclosure. First reading?
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance amending Ordinance 115 of 2015 from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund appropriating $84,351.42 for the second and final change order for the construction of Arthur Ray Teague Drainage Control Project. First reading?
So move.
Second.
Questions? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance amending Ordinance 78 of 2016 from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund appropriating $37,792.75 for the final change order for the emergency that was declared for a collapsed and ruptured sewer main at Waller Avenue and Bobby Street. First reading?
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing the amendment of a lease with Benton Road Partners LLC to provide for assignment of the lease in the event the building is purchased by CSRA and/or one of its affiliated companies. First reading?
So move. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing and approving the engagement of Heard, McElroy and Vestal to provide professional services to audit the financial statements of the city of Bossier City, Century League Arena Fund, Fireman's Pension and Relief Fund and Policeman's Pension and Relief Fund. First reading?
So move.
Second.
Questions? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to declare certain movable equipment owned by the city of Bossier City as surplus to the city's needs and provide for donation to the municipalities of Caldwell, Jonesboro, Mamu, Robeline, Manny, Villages of Creola, Renato, Wilson, Florine, Colfax and Evangeline, Louisiana in accordance with law. First reading?
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to hire one field maintenance worker, one, part-time to replace vacant positions in parks and recreations, Brownlee Park. First and final reading?
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to hire one recreation specialist, three, to replace vacant positions in parks and recreations due to retirement. First and final reading?
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to hire or promote one office manager, receptionist, to replace vacant positions in the mayor's office. First and final reading?
Counsel, I'd like to make amendment to this resolution to cap this at 30,000 per year. Do we need a second on that?
Yes.
Second.
Questions?
I guess my question would be is that hamstring anybody if we lower that like that?
Second, Tim? Who you asking the mayor?
Yeah, I guess that, I guess that-
All I can say, gentlemen, is that's an extremely important position. We only have two people who can cover the office of the mayor and with accrued leave time, sick time, vacation time. But this is normally the first face that people see when they come in the office, the first voice they hear. And you just can't hire just anybody to handle that, in my opinion. So I think the salary should have been more appropriately at 35,000. It's my personal opinion.
Is there a, I suppose in this, if we received app- is there a way to respond to this if we don't get the right kind of applicant that we're expecting? I guess, I guess we could revisit this at the time if the, if the majority here is of a persuasion to at least, uh, indicate that they want to limit that.
I would agree with that.
What is the process for that hiring? You, you'll, you'll put out a request and then the, uh, part of that will be what the salary expectation is and then a process of interviewing?
Yeah, if I understand correctly, Ms. Clark, on what you're suggesting, we go with this cap right now, but in the interview and hiring process, if we can't find the quality of person we need at this cap, that we can come back and revisit that with y'all? Is that what?
Yes.
Seems like that would be a reasonable thing to do so we don't end up in a, I guess, end up with, uh, somebody in a position that we, uh, or maybe dissing an applicant that is, uh, extremely well-qualified that is just coming from another job that is above that. So anyway, is, I, I don't guess that, does that, uh, I don't guess that we need to amend the motion or anything. I'm, I'm fine with it if, if that's a-
It only takes one reading, so we can introduce it and add it in two weeks.
Under number 11.
If necessary, so. But what I would, I'm sorry, are y'all through?
But I just, uh, my only interest was, uh, it sounds like the council's, the majority of the thinking is going to be to hold this down and, um, and I, I think I would be along with that thinking other than if some, for some reason it just wasn't seeming to work out. Yeah, that's my comment.
What I would like is Trey, would you mind coming podium, please? What, on a salary of $25,000, what is the, um, total, um, or between 25 and 30, I would like for the council to know, uh, what is the total compensation package? What is that costing the city? You know, we had that schedule prepared, Phyllis and, I don't know who had done that previous.
Mr. Buffington.
Mr. Buffington did. If we could have those numbers, I don't, are those available right now? What a salaried individual at 25 and 30,000 would be?
You're talking about the total package?
Yes.
Insurance and all that, okay.
Yeah, I don't have those numbers ready. I mean, I can get them to you guys very quickly, but it's, say, whatever the base salary is, again, the FICA or, you know, the employment tax is a 7.65%. Retirement is running 10 and a half percent. And then obviously, if they avail themselves of all the employee benefits, it would run about 80, 900, $9,300.
So that's over $40,000 on it.
Yes, sir.
$30,000. And just as a recommendation, I mean, in this day and time in the corporate world especially, you know, when people are being hired, they're being informed not just of their salary and I would like to see that presented as well. Just a recommendation of mine that we, you know, offer these things if we're not already to these, to employees, is this is your compensation package. Because they're getting a lot more than just their salary. Would you, is that a fair statement?
That's a very fair statement, yes.
And, you know, it needs to be brought to their attention that this is what we're expending on your behalf, not just your salary. You know, it, it's a mentality, I think, that I would like to see that incorporated into our corporation, the city of Bossier. You know, that this is your compensation package. Don't just think of it as salary. Because in the private sector, a lot of people don't get $9,000 worth of health benefits or the 10%, $3,000 contribution to retirement.
Right.
Anyway, just a recommendation, I'm not here to say, but I mean, I, I would like to see that incorporated into the culture and, and especially presented to the council because that's what's actually coming out of the budget, just not the salary. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, anyway.
I don't think that, I don't think you're dead on there. I, uh, I don't think I, so the, so this is raw salary plus retirement plus health benefits is what you're saying?
I mean, it, it's-
Well, it sure should, it's a great way to promote the position. Yeah, I'm not, I don't even know what that position should be paying, to tell you the truth.
Well, and I, you know, it, I, I just think that it should, anyway, I'm repeating myself.
Trey, has this been, excuse me, has this been advertised or just advertised to the city employees?
Just internally. It hasn't been posted anywhere. Just internally.
And when will that be?
As soon as it gets approved, the ordinance comes down and we'll post it. You know, usually it gets over there to our office tomorrow and we'll post it on the board tomorrow and then on the website in the morning or afternoon or whenever it comes over.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other further discussion?
It's a good idea.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
So we need a motion in a second to adopt as amended?
Okay. Erase that? I'm just getting ahead of myself. I'm intimidated.
Y'all voted on the amendment, on the amendment itself, so now we need a-
I need to, I make a motion.
Motion we, as amended?
Yeah. Nothing as amended.
Any questions? Everybody's clear? All right. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Everybody except you evidently.
Yeah. I've got a cloudy head today. All right.
Public hearing for Bossier City's 2017 CDBG Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant Funds.
All right, since this is a public hearing, anybody in the audience is welcome to speak? Mr. Brown, we think everybody's reviewed and if you have any comments that you would like to make regarding the budget and so forth? Any material changes?
Yeah, we applied for the same amount that we got last year, which, uh, we don't have any control over. It's based on what Congress appropriates, which they haven't done yet and probably won't till in the spring, but... So we're applying for $482,350. We got like 18, uh, projects lined up, which is the second page in your handout there. It just kind of lays out what we propose to, you know, spend the money on again.
No material changes from last year?
Not particularly. Uh, it's pretty much the same type of projects.
All right.
We do have a, um, a canopy for Hooter Park, which, uh, if they can cook outdoors, that we put in here. Small canopy.
All right. All right, since this is a public hearing, would anybody like to come and speak? Seeing no one comes forth, this public hearing is closed. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I just wanted to mention, Mr. President, the, uh, VOA Agency, this is one of- I just wanted to mention, Mr. President, the VOA agency, this is one of the funding recipient for that lighthouse program.
Yes, sir, they've been receiving funds all those years, as Chuck said, that, we propose, you know, this is not cut and dry until they appropriate money from Congress, but propose $11,000 to them. Nobody gets a lot of funding for those sub recipients, just enough to kind of help keep the project in Bossier.
Yes, good program.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. Mr. Brown?
Thank you.
Adopt a resolution supporting the city's application to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding entitlement status under authority of Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, 42 USC 3535D, and 42 USC 5301 at SEC, first and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approve report of first and final change order for 2015 citywide concrete repairs, a decrease of $9,404.82, total cost of contract with decrease $955,955.8.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution certifying off-system bridge program compliance for 2016, 2017 for the city of Bossier City, Louisiana, first and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to fill one vacancy in the Public Works Department, first and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of two replacement police officers, one police jailer one, and one police communications officer one, to replace resignations from the department, first and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Anything else to come before the council? Thank you, ladies, and we appreciate your attendance today and for all you do in the community. Me to adjourn.